Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the nom and for the vote. Thank you, I appreciate it. We're gonna start then with vice. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Phelps as vice. And make a motion to nominate Mr. Mills as secretary.
Second.
All in favor? That's a vote. And then I get to do the rest of the organization of the committee. I covered my notes. We're gonna, I'm gonna nominate Mr. Garafalo and Mr. Phelps for the sick leave committee. All in favor? Nominate Ms. Harrison and Mr. Phelps for the wellness committee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate Mr. Mills and Mr. Garafalo for the alcohol and drug violation subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate Mr. Phelps for the athletic department liaison.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate myself for the fiscal policy committee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate Mr. Mills and Ms. Harrison for the WRPS TV community broadcasting liaison.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate myself for the early education committee.
Second.
All in favor? And nominate Ms. Harrison for the cable advisory committee.
Second.
You guys are fast. Nominate Mrs. Maroni, myself, budget subcommittee.
Second.
Nominate Ms. Harrison and Mr. Garafalo for the energy subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate myself and Mr. Mills for the teachers collective bargaining subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate Mr. Phelps and Mr. Garafalo for the secretary's collective bargaining subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate Ms. Harrison, Mr. Mills for the custodians collective bargaining subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate Mr. Mills, Ms. Maroni, myself, the cafeteria personal collective bargaining subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate Mr. Mills, Mr. Garafalo for the paraprofessional collective bargaining subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor? Nominate Mr. Phelps and myself for the daycare collective bargaining subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor? And then, how do we say this? We nominate?
A motion.
Make a motion to accept Harvard's rules of order as our binding rules.
Okay. All in favor? Now, we're gonna close this meeting.
No, suspend it.
Suspend it. We're gonna make a motion to suspend the school committee meeting. So we can return back to the budget.
Second.
All those in favor? Now, I'm gonna make a motion to open the school budget public hearing. All those in favor? And now, we're gonna scooch out of the way.
Your microphone's dragging, Tom. So this is the final school budget for FY '20? Is there any way to amplify? Can you hear me now, everyone? Thank you. This is the final school FY '20 budget for the Rockland Public Schools. And you're gonna work, doggone it. First, we're gonna talk about salaries, then the annual expenses, special education costs, the final FY '20 appropriation, and our credits, and the revolving details of our revolving accounts. Salaries. This is the third time or so that the public has had a chance to hear our budget. So if it appears that I'm going through things quickly, it's because, again, the budget has been discussed so many times. I'm gonna point out to our audience some of the main highlights or the reasons for the numbers. So I will just point out that the change here is simply that we've begun to break out maintenance and custodians into two separate categories because that better reflects how we report to the state, and it allows us then to compare ourselves more accurately with other towns. If you also notice, non-union and administrative costs tend show quite a bit of fluctuation. And again, this is redistribution. This isn't necessarily a large increase or decrease. It's a redistribution according to DESI and the end-of-year reports and how we report, how we report out. So that's why we've moved some of those amounts around. Our total salary line for FY '20 is $22,691,127. We are very proud that this is essentially a 3% increase in our entire salary line. 3% represents a 2%, a 2% increase in pay for teachers, and the other 1% is steps and lanes. Steps and lanes are, so when a teacher joins a school system, they'll get paid as a year one teacher, and then year two, they move over a lane. Whereas in a job where you're a non-teacher, not in this situation, you may get a raise every once in a while, but when I say steps and lanes, that's what I'm referring to. So we are very proud of the fact that this budget, the salary line of this budget, is 3%, and it includes all steps and lanes, it includes all contractual obligations, and it also includes two new positions that I'll talk about in a little bit. And it redistributes things so that they are in line with our reports, which will make us more accurately be able to forecast and compare ourselves to other towns in the area. And I will talk more about that as I go, as I move forward. Annual expenses. Just wanna highlight the increases that we've had. This is a contractual increase, meaning we have a contract with our bus company, and this is a contractual increase. And homeless transportation is something that I've spoken about quite a bit. We had never had a year before this year where we had budgeted really more than $30,000 for homeless transportation. We quickly realized in about February that our homeless transportation costs had skyrocketed. At that time, in February, we forecasted $125,000 in homeless transportation for the year. We are currently forecasting closer to $160,000 for homeless transportation. And that is cost of transporting approximately 10 students. So just to let you know, it's a very expensive proposition, and I will tell you that the district is doing everything that it can to keep those costs to a minimum by privatizing, by renting our own vans, by being creative with our routes. We're doing everything we can to keep those costs down, but they are what they are. Building custodial supplies, that amount has risen, but we do have aging buildings to consider. Overall, this annual expense budget is $2,864,626. It's an approximately a 3.3% increase from FY '19, and it represents a $91,759 increase over our previous year. Annual expenses, regional. So these are our, sending our kids to Norfolk Aggie, VOTEC, and transportation. These are actual costs. These are not projections. The total costs for regional expenses for FY '20 will be $2,229,248. Special education costs this year have really exceeded, special education is a volatile area of the budget, simply because someone could move into town who has a very expensive placement, and the town automatically assumes those costs. I'll give you an example. After February, in the month of March, we had two students move into town, and for each one of those students, we pay between $20,000 and $30,000 per month for their tuition. And that is two students. And that moved in in one, in one month. Our costs for special education projected to next year have risen by $762,624. That's a 27% increase. These are, these numbers for FY '20 are based on FY '19 actual bills from March of 2019 carried forward. It does not include increases in tuitions for the schools that we send students to if we do not know about them already. Some of them we know about. So for example, if we send a student to a special school and we pay tuition to that school, that school has the ability to raise their rates annually, and they ask the Department of Education for permission, and invariably, the Department of Education grants them permission, and then the towns are forced to then pay that increase. So I'm just trying to explain a little bit about tuitions. But there's some good news from this. Because of our sharp increase in special education costs, we are also eligible for more state reimbursement, which I will point out later. So in some ways, we've, our costs have skyrocketed, but it's also made us qualify for a greater amount of reimbursement from the state. Now, I'll move on to the total requests. Our FY '20 budget is $31,332,963. That's a 4% increase. Actually, the next number I'm gonna give you represents a 4% increase. The FY '20 revenue, meaning the money that has been, that the town is contributing to our budget, is $27,786,474, leaving us with a deficit in our budget of $3,546,489. We, I am going to show you in the last two slides how we make up that credit. So we are coming up with $3,546,489, so that we come out with a completely balanced budget for FY '20. This empty space down here should say zero, but the computer wouldn't let me. Now, grants and revolving, I've talked quite a bit about this. I just wanna point out a couple of new things that we've picked up. Title IV is a new grant that Linda Minigley, our Director of Special Education, and Colleen Forlizzi, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, have, have found and brought to the district. That's an additional $24,080. You'll notice a decrease in our ELL grants for next year. But overall, we have an increase in our grant total of $73,489. The good news comes with this number right here. Our circuit breaker has, is increased because of our increased amount of special education costs, so we're able to forecast $650,000 coming to us under circuit breaker. And here's the really good news. Extraordinary relief from the state when your special education costs skyrocket like that. It allows us to qualify for extraordinary relief, and we are anticipating $650,000. That's helping us close that $3 million gap quite a bit. So total credits for FY '20 is $1,188,557. I wanna point out finally what the schools are contributing from our revolving accounts to the overall budget. And I wanna preface this by saying, what we are doing this year is not sustainable for future years. It is not sustainable. In FY '19, we contributed $814,932 from our revolving accounts. For FY '20, we are contributing $1,130,000 toward the FY '20 school budget. You'll notice we're contributing a lot more from our school choice account, and we're also, we've upped to fit, up $50,000, the amount we're contributing for after-school. But this amount is allowing us to close that gap and to produce what is a balanced budget. Just moving back, and finally, just to summarize, our final FY '20 budget is $31,332,963. And I wanna thank the Town of Rockland, I wanna thank the Finance Committee of the Town of Rockland for working with us so closely this year. I wanna thank the taxpayers for their continued support of the schools and the progress that we've been able to make each year. But again, I cannot thank the Finance Committee enough for their work with us this year. It's been a very different budget year, and I think we're moving in the right direction. And I feel very confident that the schools in the town are working very well together. And that is the entire presentation. So I'd invite the school committee to return to the podium, please. I'm sorry to make you all sit through all of that, 'cause I know you didn't come for it, but we had to take it in order because of the way that the, everything was printed. 'Cause I know it was probably riveting. And Dave, I'm begging you to turn my mic down now.
Would any citizen like to come up and ask any questions on the budget? Okay.
Make a motion to accept the budget as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Now, I'd like to close the school budget public hearing, meeting.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Now, we're gonna make a motion to open up the regular school committee meeting.
Make a motion to open up the regular school committee meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. All right. I'd like to make a motion for the acceptance of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the April 8 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? And then, we'd like to invite, in the audience tonight, we'd like to invite Susan Tasker, a daycare parent, to come up and speak, I think, over there.
Is that microphone right there, right? Does that work?
I don't know.
Yeah, it is on.
Good evening. I would like to say thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would like to introduce myself. My name is Susan Ian Tasker. My youngest son is in the infant room, and my older son graduated from daycare but still uses the facility at the youth commission. The reason I have asked to be on the agenda tonight was so that I could speak regarding the email I received from the Rockland daycare dated April 17th in reference to the Rockland Community Center. I am surprised that the email is even sent out to the parents, as in my opinion, it was poorly written. After receiving the email, I felt as if it portrayed a poor vision of the future of the McKinley building. The lack of clarity when informing parents of the closure was disappointing. You may not have had a solution to the situation, but to leave parents in a panic was not right. To state in the email that there were no plans to reopen the McKinley building is giving inaccurate information to the residents and the parents that utilize the building. After research and review of the board of selectmen's meeting that aired Tuesday, April 16th, not one time did I hear them say they were not going to reopen this building. On Thursday, April 18th, I had a meeting that I had requested with Selectman Richard Penny to discuss the issues with the McKinley building. After speaking with Mr. Penny, it became apparent that there are multiple people working on solutions for this building. I understand that you wanted to let parents know that you were looking into alternatives, but ultimately, you've made this more devastating than necessary. This is certainly not the first time that I've been down the road with the daycare, but hopefully, this will be my last. My husband, along with other parents, worked very hard to keep the daycare open three years ago. They did an amazing job, and I wanna thank them so much. Due to the success of the committee to keep the daycare open, the programs within the McKinley building have proven to be a valuable and profitable asset to this town. And also, to blame sole ownership on the Town of Rockland is not right. The school is part of the town. It may be a department, but in the grand scheme of things, we are one, the Town of Rockland. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank you for coming. And it's, you know, a bit intimidating to come up and speak to us, and I appreciate that you took the time, and I appreciate your thoughts. I'm not gonna speak here for the school committee, but it is nice that we get to hear your thoughts. We are elected officials, and part of being that is that we represent you. And part of that is that you need to tell us what you want us to do and what you want us to say. And this is exactly that. So thank you for coming, and thank you for telling us exactly what you were thinking. Anyone else?
You and I were together three years ago. We put in countless hours, and I think you know where I'm coming from, and I think you know where the school committee is coming from. This has become a very valuable program. Not that it wasn't before, but it's even better today than it ever was for all kinds of reasons, and we don't need to go into that, you know that. But point being, I don't disagree with what you say about the initial letter. It was never intent for it to be that brief, but it was, and you can't go back on that. It happened. You've got a body of competent people working on this, and I'll stick my neck out and say, I'm godly optimistic. We're gonna get through this thing. We want this program. We don't want it to go anywhere. We realize that it's important to the community of Rockland. It may not be as important to, I don't know, Abington or Hanover or any of these others, but we know people in Rockland depend upon it. We found that out three years ago, and I'm glad we did. So I, I, I hope this doesn't turn into a blame game. I mean, we were kinda hit by the side of the head, too, when we got a notice that we're gonna close you in two weeks because we don't have a sprinkler system. Oh, well, we didn't know. Now, I'm not blaming Chief Duffy. He's doing the right thing. I mean, we didn't know we didn't have a sprinkler system. No way, no way. We didn't know. All we knew was, oh my God, what are we gonna do for our daycare program? What's the youth commission gonna do? All these different people. Never mind all the volunteers that utilize that building that don't pay rent, they don't, but they're just there. One that's near the end of my hat, some of you know why, Holiday Magic. I mean, my wife worked that for years. And they're up in that room, nobody, they don't pay anybody, they just use it, but the community center is a community center. So we want it to work, believe me. I can't emphasize that enough. And I can't emphasize enough, I appreciate you stepping up, and it's not easy to do to get up in front of that microphone, I know that. It's not even easy for me, to be honest with you. But I'm kinda passionate about that. Well, you can kinda tell, I'm passionate about this thing. Dr. Cron is passionate about this thing. I know it's been rumored out there that he's not, but he is. He spent, I don't know how many hours this morning with a group of people, fire chief, superintendent of daycare, and people like this. We're gonna somehow get this done. I don't know how, yet, but we're working. We have a professional coming in. I don't know if you saw our recent email. You did, okay. I don't know if everyone else did. But we have a professional coming in to tell us just where we are with our sprinkler system. The fire chief's the fire chief, but he's not a sprinkler expert. All he knows is his work, and I respect that. We want it to be work. We don't want, God forbid, any, anything bad to happen to our kids. So that's, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
I feel compelled to take responsibility for the brevity of the original letter that went out, but I will tell you that everything in that letter was factual, and there's not a single thing in that letter that wasn't an exact fact. We had, we had, at the time, some members of the selectmen thinking that the building's gonna be closed, others members thinking that it was going to remain open, and I think there's been just a lack of clarity what the future of that building is. But I think you've read the recent emails, and our intention is to keep the daycare open and thriving, and we think it's incredible what's had, what's taken place there over the past couple of years, and it's clearly an invaluable, invaluable service. Sometimes I think it also takes a little uproar to get things moving. So I'm glad that we are where we are today, and I'm optimistic that we're gonna come out in a better place than we were before this. But I do apologize for the, for the fear, if it created fear in the hearts and minds of those who read it. At the same time, I stand behind the facts of the letter.
You need to be said, too. Daycare is paying for itself. That's it. We're not making a ton of money on daycare. The other programs, we do make some money on. There's no question about after-school and all of that. But I think there might be a perception out there that you and I, the rest of the group, fixed it better than we did. We fixed it, but we were losing $150,000 a year on the daycare, and now it's pretty much break-even, which to me is a huge victory. Plus, everything has improved about the way it's been running. So I just wanted to correct.
That was a comment I was making. Maybe I jinxed this because a couple months ago in a meeting, I looked at the figures from the daycare, and I said, oh, look, we're not in a deficit anymore, and making a little money here, but it's, yeah, and the services are there, everything else. And looking at it, I'm saying, I remember when we were having these meetings, and we were having a lot of consternation about closing the daycare because of the expense, and we, you know, and we resolved that. We got that fixed, and that, and that's been moving right along since then. Basically, just, just moving along, just nice and quietly, just going there, and the daycare was paying for itself, and we were getting, you know, more services out of it. You know, I says, hey, this is great. And then, bang, sprinkler. I bet it be quiet about the sprinklers.
Why, you don't wanna put on another fire?
Sure.
So, just a little background. Of course, it's school vacation when all this goes on, right? So where are three-quarters of everybody involved? I find out Wednesday morning when I'm driving home from New York City, Dr. Cron was away on vacation, Jill was away, Tom was away. You know, we all got hit with it Tuesday night, Wednesday morning. All right? So since Wednesday morning at 9:30, when I got the phone call, I have been nonstop phone, text, visiting the offices of the youth commission and the daycare, trying to figure out what's going on, what's, what's being said, what's incorrect that's being said, what's quasi-correct that's being said. And what's been done since then is the decision to have Dr. Cron and to have Jim Purcell, the interim town administrator, be the leads for both sides of this, because it is, you know, it does say McKinley School, but it is not owned by the schools, it is owned by the town, and we are a tenant. We pay rent to be there. With that being said, we're all involved trying to keep everything going, because we don't wanna lose the daycare. I'm from here. I grew up in that youth commission. I don't wanna lose the youth commission. I happen to really like Gene, too, so I really don't wanna lose Gene either. So, you know, we're all doing everything we can, and I do have one suggestion that alongside with Dr. Cron and Mr. Purcell as the leads, I think we should have one member from the school committee, and the board of selectmen should do the same, have one member be involved with this, so there's everything lined up. And I would like to be that member from our side, if there's no objections from anybody. I don't know if I need to...
I think we should have the chairman, to be honest with you.
Well, the only problem with that, Dick, is what I do is I'm in and out of buildings all day long, looking at buildings and doing pricing and stuff, and I wanna do it. And that's...
We have a fire chief, we have the superintendent of schools, we have the town manager, and I personally just think it should be the chairman of the school committee. You know, I, I, leave it up to the board, it's their choice. You've got a nomination, you nominate yourself, and that's fine. You've got a nomination, you nominate yourself, and that's fine. And I'll nominate Jill, and then what?
Then we go, do I get a second?
You need a second.
Jill get a second? Let's...
Wait, though, let's talk for a second. I'm not saying you can't, or I'm not going that way. You have time, is what I'm saying. This is how I ended up in this seat, because we discussed the time, okay? And you're thinking, you do. I don't want to put something on your plate that then you're juggling work and home and everything else.
I have time.
Okay.
And, like I said, I do pricing, I do negotiations, I do buildings, so it's kind of my wheelhouse.
So, you want to second him?
I'll second it. Mike, get set.
I feel compelled to second myself. Sorry, Mike. Emily, brand new, welcome to the table.
I was going to say, we should have introduced Emily. Thank goodness she's here.
This is our best Emily Harrison. Go with your gut, don't feel peer pressured by any of us, you do what you think is best.
I'll make a motion to second Jill.
Okay. So, now, is it all those in favor?
I don't know if it'll be which one first.
She, it's me, right?
You have to ask both candidates. They both have seconds.
Right, so you have to ask, vote on each candidate.
Okay, make your vote on each candidate?
Yeah.
So, you start, Mr. Phelps?
Well, I would, well, you nominated, obviously, you were going to ask how many will vote for Jill, and how many will vote for Mike.
How many vote for Jill? And how many vote for Mike?
It's a three to two.
Yep. So, you're ready.
Okay. So, that's all I have to say?
Yeah.
You never had to vote. Thank you for watching me on my first meeting. Okay. So, back to this daycare. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? You're all here, we're all ready to listen. If anyone else wants to come up, right? Any questions?
Any ideas? I mean, you can see the problem, and we're going to do damnedest to solve it, but it is a problem. Hey, to give you an idea, I went to school there, I was in the sixth grade there, okay? So, that gives you an idea of how old the place is.
No one? We're all Bulldogs. Go ahead.
Members of the board, Town of Rockland. I'm not normally at these meetings, although I think all of us should make a better effort.
Have you seen a name? I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry, Steve O'Donnell. Live on Winding Way. I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old, both at the daycare. My five-year-old will be going to the kindergarten next year. My three-year-old will continue to be there. My wife works closely, and I think she's the head of the pack for the daycare, Janet can confirm. She had other conflict tonight, she couldn't be here, but we felt compelled to be here. And I think it's important, especially considering what the town's gone through over the last year and a half, you know, it's certainly brought the town together, I think. People seem to be more willing to come out and participate, and looking at the warrant for the town meeting in two weeks, it's packed. But wanted to come out tonight and, you know, talk and, A, commend Janet and her team over at the daycare. They've been doing a heck of a job. We've, my eldest has gone to a couple of daycares over the years, and we've never felt more welcomed and felt more involved with how our kids move through the daycare and how they continue to progress through to the point now where my daughter going to kindergarten, and a lot of kids are nervous about it. To her, it's the next step, and it's because of the work they do at the daycare. I know this is a town building, after doing the research and kind of looking into this, and the school is a tenant, and I can appreciate that. I do echo the statements made earlier. The statement in the original communication was brief, although factual, you're right. I think it could have been handled a bit better, maybe distributed a bit more widely. And then, the second communication that went out today did not go out through the same communication means as the first. I think that could have been handled a little bit better. I know I get, I think, some emails from the school, I get, I know I get emails from the daycare, but didn't get the email today, my wife did. I think we need to make sure that the communication is more structured. I think today's communication was a lot better, there was a lot more information there. And maybe, and I think it's not just, certainly not just the school committee, I think you guys do a fantastic job, but the entire town, and plan to talk to some people involved in politics here, to make sure the website's updated with this kind of information, that this, none of this information, the communication, the original communication, today's communication, none of it's on the town website.
That's needed.
So, I think, you know, communicating is the most important thing. Had we got the information, although it didn't exist prior to today?
It was on the school website.
Was on the school website?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on our website, not the town's. Town website needs some updating.
Good to know. But, yeah, so, I don't want to go on forever. I think it's great that we're looking at new opportunities. Today's communication made me feel a lot better, but made the plan to come out here anyway, so figured I'd come. And anything that the citizens can do to help with this process, I think, you know, let's make the ask of the citizens to help, and if there's anything I can do, happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I will reach out to the town side of things, just to make sure that their website is up to date as ours, okay? Mr. Biggins?
Good afternoon, thank you. Dan Biggins, 35 Heritage Drive. I just want to thank the school committee for taking the opportunity to clarify the situation a little bit. I think, as you can see, the community's spoken loudly once again just how much this daycare means to them, just in so many different ways, whether it be the town employees who utilize it to take care of their kids, whether it be the parents who work outside of town that utilize it as a low-cost alternative and quality alternative to be able to take care of their kids, allowing them to go out and actually work, not to mention all the people from Rockland who are actually employed by the daycare. You know, I think the specter in the room of the original letter that went out put a lot of fear into a lot of folks, and as you can see, it spoke to action, and what we do here in Rockland is we don't just give up. I know we'll find an answer one way or another. So, I just wanted to thank the administration and thank the committee for taking the opportunity to embrace the community and their questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins. Emily, did you want to say anything? I didn't want to cut you off. Mike did. Did you? Dr. Cron, did you want to keep going on to what you talked about in your meeting today?
Well, we got somebody. We got somebody.
Oh, I thought she was walking to the door. Sorry, Jen.
Jennifer Holland, I live at 74 South Douglas Street. I'm the crazy mom three years ago that was crying on Fox News to keep this daycare open. I just want to thank you guys for, you know, communicating back to us to help keep this I can't help with the crazy mom crying again. This program means a lot to us, you know? Not only the daycare, but the Youth Commission as well. I had my two sons, I have a 10-year-old and an eight-year-old, I had their birthday party there on Saturday. I had 45 kids, mostly boys. Yes, I'm crazy, but it was wonderful. It was a great place. It was, they had the best time, and I honestly, for the price, I would never have been able to do that at a Sky Zone, at Kids Planet. My children utilize the after-school program through the daycare. I unfortunately don't use the daycare anymore, but a lot of my friends still do, and I just want to thank you all for doing this. But I do have a question. If the sprinkler system does not appear to look like it's going to work, do we have any ideas, so we can just kind of give people a little bit of relief? Do we have any ideas on what will be the solution?
So, we met, I had nine or 10 meetings this morning, and one of them was exploring where the program could be housed in the fall. We're exploring where to put it for the summer. Worst-case scenario, the McKinley School does go offline, so we're trying to plan for that. So, the question right now for the school department is, can we house the daycare in our elementary schools? We're pretty full right now, but we are exploring possibilities for being able to do that. But we're also exploring other possibilities, whether it be an area outside of the school, whether it be a place like North River Collaborative that's nearby. But we are not going to give up on this program. I think we can house it in one of our elementary schools, it would make things very, very tight. I also think it should be part of the discussion in the building project going forward. I think it should be something that's considered as part of the new elementary building project and the creation of the Early Childhood Center at the Esten School, so I think it's something to talk about. But I think the most important thing that's being said here is that the daycare is appreciated and respected and very important to this town, and it should not go away.
Any objection? You know, the two of them combined are just...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can't forget.
No, we can't forget, because if we forgot the Youth Commission, then there would be 100 children on Friday night without anything productive to do. And not just on Friday night, but on many other nights, and camps, and all the other fantastic things that the Youth Commission do. So, there's a real concerted effort. I think we have everyone's detention now, and I think that we are going to find a solution. And I know that I'm committed, and this committee is committed, to sustaining the daycare, whether it be in one of our elementary schools or at an alternate location. But I think we can say with confidence, there's no need to unenroll your child, there's no need to worry about whether or not this daycare is going to continue, because it's going to.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I also, I also think, you know, to me, there seems to be a lack of space in the town for things. I mean, the person I heard from was Vinnie, the Veteran Service Agent. He just moved down there. Now, he's moving back, you know? He's saying, you know, and he has an important role for all of us here. And that's true with all the people that work at the, in the town, whether it's, you know, from the superintendent of the schools, you know, the town administrator, to the, you know, to the health department, everything else. They all have important roles, and they need space and places to work comfortably and make sure they get their jobs done. I think that's one of the things we really need to do as a town, is look at what space requirements we need for the town, not just, you know, not just for the schools or the daycare or something like that, but for the town. And try to solve that problem, maybe at the same time, or try to at least take that in consideration when we're trying to solve the issues. So, I think it's important that we get this, and we work together in this, because we can't work, you know, apart from this.
I think having a spacious unit in the town is a good one, right? That means we're growing, we're coming in, right? We have another lady?
Yeah, I'm Andrea Davis, I live at 53 Milbrook Drive. We actually just bought the house there after moving from Moncrete Road because of daycare. So, when we received the email, we were pretty shocked that we had just spent an insane amount of money on a house we really can't afford to stay in a town that would no longer be sorting a daycare we use for Addie, who's seven months old. My husband and I both work at Harvard University, so we are not close to home when we're working, and I think Janet, Marissa, and the rest of the team have done an excellent job making us feel like Addie's safe when she's with them. We've come in more times than not, and she's being rocked to sleep by, you know, one of the teachers in the classroom, and I hear what everyone is saying here tonight, and I'm really grateful to hear that there's no need to unenroll our children. Obviously, everybody wants the kids to be safe, but I think if the daycare is just breaking even, I think we have to think outside of the financial aspect of the daycare itself, because this is the future of the town, right? So, my husband and I have an income, we spend that money in Rockland, we want to stay in Rockland, we want Addie to go to school in Rockland, and she might stay here. So, obviously, there's bigger things to think about than just breaking even, which is important. But we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the daycare, I can say that as pretty much a fact, and I just want to make sure that I'm heard, because I've probably been more active in town the last few days than I've ever been, and sometimes, being a mom just brings it out of you. So, I just wanted to come up and say that I'm grateful to the daycare staff. I think all of the programs that are at McKinley are important, and if we want to grow as a town and be as successful as some of our neighbors, then we need to do the right thing and make it happen, and make sure that nobody feels like they're on the edge. That is right.
Yes. Nice job, Andrea.
That's it, thanks. Thank you.
We should also know, we have some skin in the game. About 50 of our employees in the school system, their kids attend the daycare. I don't know what would happen if we didn't have the daycare. I suspect we're going to lose teachers. That would not be a good thing for many different reasons. So, that's another thing that you should know about, the skin in the game. We don't want it to happen.
And I think maybe knowing a little bit about us. I'm raised in Rockland, my kids are obviously in the schools in Rockland, I'm a Rockland Bulldog. My husband is born and raised, his brothers went to the Chipmunks Program, my children went through the Youth Commission with all sorts of activities, just flag football last summer. So, it is, Rockland is not just a business that we're going to break even and call it a day. It's a heart, it's a community, and I think this shows, it takes a village, and we're here as a village, sitting in this auditorium right now, sticking together and standing up for what we believe this town needs and what this town, you know, should have. We're trying to build a hub, we're trying to work together with the Selectmen, and I think this is proving that now, with everything that's going on in the town hall, we can, right? It's changing up there, we're shifting around down here, but we're still all here, and we're still all working together, and we want this to be a positive, growing experience. We want the kids that are coming up to stay, just like I did and my husband did and most of us here. So, I appreciate you certainly taking the time to come out and tell us. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Do you think the logistics would be that, like most of the daycare staff, would stay wherever the building would be, like in the elementary schools? Like, would the team, the daycare team, still be the daycare team?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a great team. I think they've been very loyal to everyone.
Yes, I don't foresee splitting.
Okay, because I know sometimes, you know, working in schools, there's a lot to manage.
Right.
And if you're moving, like, physical buildings, I would hope that we would keep our daycare team.
Yeah.
Right.
They work really hard, and they're really talented, so...
Absolutely.
Right.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself.
No, I'm glad you asked. I think that we've been, in all of this process, that we've been trying to get exactly what they need in the daycare, so that wherever they end up, we have. So, I know, myself, I reached out to a commercial Realtor to find out sort of what is, in case we don't end up in McKinley, in case we need to go somewhere else, what else is in Rockland, and that was exactly it. We sort of want to set it up the same way it is now, because it's working now, so why shift the boat? I'm a mama, I have two kids, I get where you're standing, I get where they're standing. Our number-one priority is these kids, and you guys going off to work and leaving them and trusting who has them.
And I think also, I mean, you look at it, and there are certain requirements that we'd have to adhere to as putting the daycare together.
Yeah.
In the school, in the school building.
Right.
Because, you know, access and, you know, not access would be very important for that, you know, and security, and how it's, you know, how things are handled in each part of the building, because the principal would have responsibility for the school building, but the person in charge of the daycare would have responsibility for the daycare.
Okay.
And all that goes on there. And so, I understand where being, that being a teacher myself in a school, I mean, sometimes you got outside influences, and you look at it and you say, hey, wait a second, you, we still control this, and you take, you work there.
Well, I just know it can be tricky, and I just, I really do think that you have a talented team there, and under the, like, new director, it's been, and assistant director, it's been really a phenomenal experience, and that's why Sean drives down two hours a day to have that experience. I'm so happy he was in the infant room with the same teachers that Jack had. And just sorry, I've really, like, worked here for 16 years, and I'm from Rockland, so it really is a gem, so. And I appreciate that you could help with the confidence, like the message, Dr. Cron, that you shared with us today, because literally, I was looking for other care. Like, I'm very efficient to some degree on some things that I have to take care of, and I was already trying to line up my care, because my employment's really important to me.
Absolutely.
So, I'm glad I made it to tonight's meeting.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.[1695.33]
Spread the word.
Watch the TV.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you for coming, and I appreciate, I think I've said this 40 times tonight, that all of you coming to tell us exactly what you're thinking. Like I said, it takes a village, and you are one, and we are part of that, so I appreciate you taking the time. If it's okay, we're gonna move on to the next.
You don't have to, if you don't want to, I know you're...
This is thrilling.
But if you don't, you don't have to stay here.
Wait a minute.
We won't be offended if you leave.
No. Okay. Next, yeah.
We've been outside. All right, moving right on.
Next item on the agenda is the correspondence. I see nothing, so I'll go right on to superintendent's report. Dr. Cron?
I just want to reiterate the message that went home today. The press release reads, "Rockland officials provide update on McKinley Community Center." And just want to thank Chief Duffy and Tom Rubel, our building inspector, for the courage to stand up and say that this can't go on anymore. I think that they've done a terrific job communicating with us over the past few weeks, and I'm looking forward to finding a solution for this.
Thank you.
We have a company called, let me find the name of the company. It's not jumping out at me. City Point Fire Protection Incorporated, and they're a Rockland company.
They're out of Rockland.
They're out of Rockland. They're going to by Monday, go in and evaluate the sprinkler system in the building and give us a roadmap for the way forward. We're hoping they even get in before then, so then we know exactly what our next steps will be. So the next step, we had a meeting this morning with a very small group, the next step is to, I think the comment that was made tonight about communication is extremely important. And so when we sat down this morning, the town and the schools and all involved, I think it was one category that we really talked about, how are we gonna communicate? We want to make sure that there's a chain of command, meaning everyone who needs to know knows before it becomes public, so our goal is to communicate with families before they see it on the news. So we need efficient ways to do that. So anyway, I'm very optimistic, it's been a very long day, but I am, I am very optimistic that we are gonna come out of this a better town, and that the school department and the town and the rest of the town departments are gonna work together more closely in the future because of this issue. So that's all I have for superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the reports. We have financial reports for the month of March. We have five reports, school department, the high school student activities, the middle school student activities, the cafeteria, and the daycare.
Five motions, five seconds.
All those in favor?
All right.
Next, we would have the curriculum corner from Esten School, but because we changed locations, they had to change off of the agenda for tonight, so they're moved down to another night, so we're gonna skip past that. Next after that is old business, fundraisers completed.
There's two of them.
We do. We have...
Chair Mark Raff.
Thank you. RMS Pack had a Shamrock Classic, they raised $2,021.80, and all of us survived, correct?
Most of them.
No injuries. And after that, they had a basket, the RMS Pack had a basket and calendar raffle, and they also raised $416. So good job to the middle school pack. Next after that is new business. We have a request for approval of fundraisers. The art department is having a tote bag sale on May 1st and May 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
Good job, Emily.
Give her her first second.
And the next up is the board of selectmen liaison to the school committee.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we ask Dr. Cron to send a letter to the selectmen for reasons that I believe they're aware of, that we would like a new liaison from the board of selectmen to the Rockland School Committee. As I say, I think they're already aware that this may be coming towards them, but I think it's a proper way to frame it, just ask you to send a letter to them.
Motion, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a vote. And down to personnel information for March and April. Dr. Cron, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No comments.
No comments? On to public service announcements. We usually start ladies first. I feel like I'm a swords. Emily, you would be the first lady?
Okay. Thank you all for welcoming me for my first meeting, and we did have a crowd in here, so I'm glad it went pretty smooth.
Me too. Mr. Graffalo?
I got those.
Mr. Mills?
Just that, you know, here we are, pretty close to the end, getting close to the end of school. This is the end of April, you know, AP tests are coming up soon out there, and all that good stuff that's happening, and...
Hard to believe.
It is hard to believe, you know? And just, you know, start going out with, you know, a good effort to get that stuff done, you know? There's a lot of things coming up with that, and enjoy yourself for the rest of the next 16, six weeks or something like that, or whatever it is.
It's coming fast. Mr. Phelps?
First, I want to thank the townspeople for electing me again to the Rockland School Committee. It's a love of my life, actually. I've been doing it now for over 25 years, and it's something that's just become a part of me, I appreciate it. I want to congratulate Emily, because I don't know, she might be a little younger than I was, but not a whole lot. And I welcome her, that's a good thing, she's very energetic, she's got a lot of great ideas, and I think I'm looking forward to working with her. I've known her a little bit over the years, but now I'll really get to know her, I'm sure. And I want to congratulate Jill for becoming our chairperson. I think that's an exceptional accomplishment, and I think over the years ahead that you will appreciate what she brings to the table.